I want to call the Concord School Committee meeting back to order. Those that were being recorded live, I think. And to see if we have any public comment today? No, but we have the public. Thank you for this rescheduled meeting. A lot of our ordinary time. Okay, so I'll take a motion for the reading of the minutes approving CPS meeting 1/8, sorry, January 19.
Moved to approve as submitted, the minutes of January 8, 2019.
Second. Any discussion or further edits? Okay, thank you Erin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unfortunately, we can't do recognitions?
No, we'll reschedule, nothing.
They can't leave those kids?
Yeah, we're not going to have to leave the kids to come do this without.
The subpar version, it's okay.
Yeah. The daytime version.
Tune in. All right, chairs and liaison reports.
I visited the FinCom meeting and the FinCom approved a motion to ask the Select Board to create a municipal building committee and a facilities planning committee. So they will officially send a letter to the Select Board shortly and then the Select Board at one of the following meetings will discuss and vote on this presumably.
And that committee, did they say that the goal of the committee would then be to do a townwide study of what needs to be done and when and all of them?
The facilities planning committee idea came from discussion, I believe, of the 2003 Facilities Planning Committee report, which was about over 40 pages. Very comprehensive, I think some of us have seen it. And so they, you know, they want to look into whether the Select Board is interested in creating a committee like this for now and going forward, which, you know, in general, I think makes sense because, you know, they should be planning concerning various needs, municipal needs the town has, such as improvement of the fire station, the police station in Concord Center, the Kaiser Road, Public Works facility, and the town also needs more office space and meeting space. So, but this is in the very early stages.
Okay. Can I just respond too quickly because, sorry, at our first info session last night regarding CMS, I got a question on it. Asked what does the school committee think about it? Obviously, I said, "The school committee has not discussed it. We do not have a committee opinion on it." So I would love to just kind of tell you all what I said in response and make sure that that seems okay in case it comes up again. What I basically said was no committee opinion, but that personally, I clearly think it's a very good idea to do this planning. No, just what you said, Bob, you got to do that, you got to plan, very good idea. That my concern regarding the middle school in particular, related to this topic, was that if it started to become a suggestion that we should wait on our middle school planning for a year or two just to do another big study and plan, that that could, in theory, cost, not even just in theory, that probably would, cost the town significant money in the realm of millions of dollars by putting it off to wait and that when we have a project that we know is relatively urgent and needs to be done, I wouldn't want to put it off and cost the town money just to do a plan first. Does that seem like a, I mean, and again, I stated that as my personal opinion, but I want to make sure that I'm, you know, not saying anything that doesn't...
Align.
Right, that doesn't align with the way we're thinking. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it's a very early stage, as you said.
Right, and we don't know the details, but...
My personal answer, people who inquired, again, not speaking for the committee, was I had not heard from the FinCom that this was intended to reset the clock for the middle school that has been running for the better part of three years now. You know, we know that people are paying very new attention to this because in December we learned that we weren't going to be invited into the state. We talked about it all fall, but we couldn't move until December. So those folks who were watching the committee and the administration knew that it was watchful, hopeful waiting and then start to take action in December if necessary. And the kind of action we took was dictated by MSBA and our pinpoint. So, you know, until we hear from the FinCom that there is a middle school, a purpose to do this, which we're not hearing right now, I take the FinCom at their word, this is something that's a look ahead and doesn't change things that are presently underway, although I'm sure we'll have discussions with them.
I think we would want to bifurcate that conversation, that we get a commitment that will, you know, the middle school will be considered, assuming we get the feasibility to study, passed and voted on affirmatively, that, you know, that's one conversation.
Right.
Another conversation would be school committee input on the building committee. Because I do think we should weigh in on that.
Okay, good, thank you.
I think also the, I mean, my experience has been these things take a long time to sort of get formed in our own experience of developing committees and charges and stuff. And to be supportive and, you know, hopefully included in those conversations, great.
Yeah, hopefully.
And we have, you know, an opportunity to keep, you know, advocating for our middle school and the town has an opportunity to voice their, you know, opinion and support or not of that. So I did notice in the 2003 Facilities Committee report, which I did read, at the time that they did it, ALLOC was in the queue, they were talking about it, and so ALLOC was sort of set aside as, "We'll move ahead with ALLOC."
Already moving.
Right, so there is precedent for that and it likewise was tagged as a 20-year report, so still has some time in it.
Yeah, that's right.
And the middle school was in there as a possibility to do about this time. It also had the high schools phased, so we've done something different with the high school, but it's about spot on for where we were as a town, where they were suggesting that the middle school be considered as one of the next building projects. So hopefully it all will stay, you know, we keep all those conversations going and, as you say, be included in...
Yeah, definitely.
In different ways.
They certainly think we should support this initiative and discussion.
Yep.
There's no doubt.
And to that, and to worry, maybe Jared and I will be at the Select Board meeting next Tuesday.
Yes.
To present on this and possibly, you know, take questions and conversation on the high school. We're still waiting to hear the specifics.
Right.
But, so, any other thoughts tonight or other reports?
I guess on another report from it, she just reported that a few of us were at, I'm not the liaison, but I was at the Select Board meeting, some of you were too, what was it? I lost track. Last week, a week and a half ago?
Wing bowl.
Feels like a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think it's since we were last here.
Yeah.
That was the Select Board and it was just because they had middle school on their agenda to talk about themselves, so I went to just listen.
Thank you.
But they asked a question about, actually, their first question that they asked, that they wanted feedback on, was our preference of ballot election timing on this question, which we will get to tonight, so we'll put it aside. But they asked me to come up, so I answered that we hadn't discussed and didn't have an opinion yet, and while I was sitting there, they asked me some more questions on the middle school. So I basically, you know, without having our slides or presentation or anything like that, kind of gave them the very 10,000-foot version of, you know, we are recommending that we move forward and this is why, we feel that it could actually cost the town more to wait, and there is lots of data behind that, which I didn't get into, but just kind of gave them the high-level thinking of where we are. So that'll be, it's perfect timing to follow up with them next week with all the details.
Yep. Great. All right, anything else in that regard? Correspondence, well, we've gotten an email about the middle school and some questions about that, and we got an email thanking Heather for her awesome support and efforts she's been doing.
Which is everyone.
Well, you should get a pat on the back for that work, that's good. I don't know if there's any other correspondence.
No.
All right, to the meat of the meeting.
Yes.
CMS facilities presentation. So Heather and I have been working a lot on this, and some of you now, because of our postponed meeting, have sat and had, you've had a session with Heather, I've had a session with Bob. So this will be our sort of official school committee presentation that we will note that does get edited periodically and tweaked. Our information sessions are for information, but it's two ways. One, to inform the community and anyone interested in our work and what we're advocating for, and two, to get feedback and learn how it is perceived and what is missing and what people would like to know more of. So we've had already some good feedback in the two sessions we've done.
Definitely.
So I'll, we'll get up to the computer to click, we're going to do this together, take turns, so it's a little more interesting maybe, not same voice.
You're making it boring to me too. Can I jump into, I think, the way Joanna and I were thinking of this was somewhat like a, both a run-through to get feedback on the slides in case there are more changes and also like a training, because all of us are going to be giving this. Right now Joanna and I have been sowing the weeds that we could practically do it without the slides, probably. But this is a lot of information to see and then all of a sudden have to present, if you guys are presenting it, whether it be to other groups or answering questions. So I think we both saw this as kind of, let's make this a working session, we'll go through it as if we're presenting to another group, but stop us in places where you want to talk about, you know, how we're presenting it or what we say or what you should say or questions that might come up, that kind of thing.
And also, the purpose of having a hard copy was for, as we will talk about how we communicate and where we go and take these presentations, we have the schedule, but we also have assigned sort of groups that we want to be sure are well-informed, might be by ourselves or whatever, so it's an opportunity to take the notes and remember, there's certain things that we really want to still convey, even though they might not be on a slide, and make sure, you know, this was the opportunity to include X, Y, or Z. We do have a number of additional slides in the addendum to our set of slides that should be used to be able to answer questions, and we can go through that. This isn't exactly in presentation form, so we're just going to scroll down. But especially for everybody seeing for the first time, a little overview, which is that we face a time-sensitive planning challenge for our middle schools. Their infrastructure and the buildings are at the end of their useful life, if not beyond, and are becoming less and less reliable. We have applied for MSBA funding and support the last two years and we have been declined both times. There's a lot of competition and a lot of old schools and a lot of needy schools. So we're faced with a difficult choice now. Do we reapply and risk being declined again and losing time and spending money on these schools, or do we move ahead on our own? The question comes down to two things pretty much, cost and control. Self-funding, while it feels more expensive and actually costs more overall, the increased cost could be offset by avoiding the construction cost growth escalate, is that right? Construction cost...
Growth.
Escalation growth. Over the years, it's very much documented, it's increasing each year. If we're not approved by MSBA next year, waiting is risky for the infrastructure and the possibilities of failures that could cost a lot. Self-funding, as a side, does allow us to build a school that will meet our educational needs. There's a lot of work going on right now that Lori and Heather are envisioning and what it is that these teachers and this community wants to be able to best educate these kids and these families. So we've tried to describe the issues in the slides that follow, certainly a lot of questions, and it is complicated, a few caveats. We have not designed the building, all right? There is no building, but we have early suggestions and recommendations from architects Feinbold and Alexander, or Feinbold Alexander, who did some work with a group that Heather led the Facilities Committee two years ago. One thing is they recommend one building for our middle school, roughly 125,000 square feet, and the costs that we can use to estimate, our cost estimates are based on the best available data that we have now, which is these, we use these things, the cost per square foot on current projects that MSBA is doing, and I should say current middle school projects. The cost escalation projections, that's mostly construction cost escalations from the MSBA. I'll say that they all can be found on, they have a site, MSBA is full of all this information, it's where we got it. And then the cost of maintaining or replacing or repairing some major things at our school that the school department, Jared and Brian and Lori have gone out and put some estimates on. So at this point, it's important to know there are many more unknowns than knows, but we're going to work with what we know to try and advocate for our kids and what would be best for our middle schools and their education. The agenda, we're going to go through the building histories, their current conditions, what the process and timeline looks like, project costs, cost of waiting, and then the possible benefits of self-funding. Was this Mary?
I was going to, yeah, I think we're going to switch here.
Yeah, go.
I think this is what you decided me.
I'll keep going.
I have to stay closer to it because now I can't see.
Oh, come over.
Words as much. No, come over here. Okay, so building histories, I'm not going to go through every single line of these. The highlights here are that Sandborne is 55 years old, that's important. PBD is almost 50. Sandborne itself, and actually really on both of them, there has not been significant work put in other than the new boilers and water heaters in the past 10 years. There was some work before that on elevators and roofs and all that kind of stuff. At Sandborne, at three points over the past 15 years, we've added modular buildings to support the community there and...
Have you done it yet?
Yeah, a little bit. And as I said last night, I'll get to the 7th, 8th grade, accommodating 7th and 8th grade in a minute and address both of those. PBD itself, I think the most important point is that it was designed in 1968 as an open concept elementary school. That was an interesting concept at the time even, and for a middle school, it's really not the most efficient thing out there. It was opened in 1970 as overflow for Sandborne and has operated that way since. So important point that this structure of having two different buildings was never a design in the first place. It was simply as overflow and we've been dealing with it that way since. So we have dealt with it as best we can, but of course, we're retrofitting constantly, PBD, you know, adding temporary walls to make it a little more suitable for middle school students. Again, similar history of work, and this coming year, the reconfiguration, I was just pointing out that 6 will be PBD, 7 will be that Sandborne, and that that addresses some of the challenges that we find, but does certainly not fix our problems at all. There's balance, there are other issues that come up with it, like more transitions, but we feel like for the next, whether it's four, five, or six, hopefully not, or more years that we're in this building, it will be a better experience for the students if we can configure it this way with 6 and PBD. So then we get to the facilities planning committee. So this is what Joanna mentioned that we created two years ago. It was 15 community members, a combination of teachers, administration, residents who have some experience in construction and architecture and different things. We met monthly, we held some public forums on input. The primary thing that we did was hire Feinbold Alexander to do a study on the buildings. They did a full detailed facility study, giving us a long detailed report of all of the details of the buildings themselves, the structures, how they're working, how they've been maintained, all of that. But there were three primary questions that we asked this committee, and this is really important, the first one especially, what would it take to remain in the current building for 10 years? The reason we asked that is because the first question before you go out with any of the following information in terms of building now or building soon is, "But wait, couldn't we wait for another 10 years? Couldn't we spread this out from the high school a little bit?" So we wanted to understand, is that an option? We'll get to that. Then we asked them for estimated costs and options on renovation and rebuilding.
Heather?
So what they, yeah, yeah.
Just a quick question on that slide. The committee, it says, was made up of 15 community members.
Community being not necessarily residents, but the school community, residents, teachers, administrators.
Yeah.
Exactly. So all part of our school community, not necessarily all residents.
Yeah, I mean, one person might read that as residents.
Okay.
I'm just...
That's a good point. We can define that or change the wording if you need.
Not make it too long, but obviously, you know...
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, community and community members and staff or something like that, maybe.
Yeah, something, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so what did Feinbold come up with? There were three, in terms of the current conditions, there were, you know, there are 100 pages on it, but the three themes were that the two buildings are just deteriorated and obsolete. One thing that's important to point out with that, though, is that they said many times, although they are well-maintained and have been well-maintained, they're at the end of their lifespan. The buildings are not falling apart because we haven't maintained them. They've actually been very well-maintained for what they are, but they're buildings with a 50-year lifespan and we're there. So they're just becoming obsolete. The two-campus configuration itself is inefficient and expensive, we'll get to the details behind that, but using one building as overflow just isn't sustainable, even though we've done it for so long. And the current situation really does create a struggle for the whole school community, for everybody. It's a suboptimal educational experience at the end of the day, and we need to address that. So the 10-year outlook, this is important, to not question about what would it take to keep us in this building for 10 years, to punt on this project and do it a little later. Their recommendations to stay in the building for 10 years, they had categories of basically must-do and optional. The must-do items for both buildings told a $34 million in investment. The optional items, to make it even better, were $47, but let's stick with the $34 even because those were the must-do to make it really viable for another 10 years. $34 million. There's no way that we, the school committee, would ask the town for $34 million now only to come back 10 years from now and ask for what could be, what, $150 more, more million then. It's not tenable, it's not a smart idea. So we basically dismissed that as a possibility or as a recommendation that we would support. Then we get to current conditions. Is that you?
Yeah.
Are we still in the right order?
I think so. All right, so current conditions, operational inefficiencies to buildings, outdated infrastructure, we talked on the age, that, aging equipment and the overcrowding issue, and really sort of to our heart of what we're doing is educational shortcomings and how we, in 21st century learning, are really struggling to create spaces that optimize team-based building and interdisciplinary learning and all kinds of things that our staff, who are absolutely wonderful, would like to do and grow and, you know, create for our kids. So the operational inefficiencies we talked about is two buildings. We have two educational experiences that we want to provide good service and equal service to both buildings and all kids. It requires redundant positions. It's expensive utility costs, dude, wonder they're old and outdated, that's expensive enough, we got to do it two times. It is estimated by our school department that basically we have excess of operational expenses, $548,000 a year, to maintain this scenario. I will say, in one of our previous, our previous session that we had, someone pointed out it might be nice to see a comparison of an old school versus new school utility costs too, because then you could say, you know, you're going to, obviously, the new school have a lower utility cost and capital expectations for a little while too, I lose first.
Joanna?
Yeah.
Would you go back to current conditions for a moment, please? This is where we reference the educational shortcomings. In going through the buildings and talking with teachers, what I heard, what some of us heard again and again from teachers was, "Well, I'm making do. I'm making do, I'm making do." They weren't complaining, they were simply explaining that they were accommodating, that they were adapting, that they were making the best of it. And that's, you know, I commend them for that. Where it left me short of information was, if you weren't adapting, if you weren't compromising, what would be happening? Because they're very good sports about it. So I would hope that we could, Lori, perhaps through you, drill down a little bit more and come up with another half dozen...
That's exactly what the facility planning group's been doing, is working on that education.
So that's starting to emerge.
That's visioning, yeah. So we'll talk more about that, so.
Thank you.
I'll give you more of a detailed update on where we are on that and how we'll use it.
Because the teachers, to their credit, aren't helping us, you know, they're saying, "No, I'm making do."
Make a do, do that, that's right.
Yeah, and I think this work that this group is doing, led by Heather and Lori, is already many hours in of, you know, really searching for...
So that piece is key then.
Envisioning middle school education.
All right, thank you.
And is that, that high-level slide that you just brought her back to is kind of an, it's like a mini-agenda of what we're going through now within current conditions.
True.
So we're going to get back, we're going to get to more educational shortcomings.
Yeah, includes all that. So we've talked about the operational inefficiencies and then the outdated infrastructure. Again, things like heating lines, plumbing lines, electrical systems are original to the building. The roofs are at the end of their projected life, Septic is over 50 years old. This is not to say they haven't been well-maintained and, you know, repaired over time, but it's to say that we're hanging on to very old infrastructure. Ventilation and air circulation is really non-existent. There are hazardous materials that they just used back when they built buildings like this, like asbestos and mercury and PCBs that are very well-maintained, but, you know, you get to repair something, behind that, that's an added cost and risk, obviously, we wouldn't want to take. Neither building has a fire suppression system, and the concrete on the building, the PBD building is showing that it's in the final stages of the failure of the concrete. Just a few pictures to show, these ventilation systems are actually incredibly hard to get to if there was a, you know, a repair needed. You can see the corroded heating pipes, ventilation, it's actually a system that's inside the classroom, all very outdated, hard to reach, and oftentimes, actually, you can't get parts when you need them, and that's a big risk too, if they fail or they need a repair. Trying to find that out, you know, the parts is an added challenge. Again, here's some of the corroded plumbing and heating pipes, asbestos-covered, ductwork, all as is, is okay, we wouldn't want to have to go in there and repair. And finally, the roof, which in a darker setting, you can see the seams are the biggest thing, if they start to fail, we're looking at major repairs and replacement of the roof. We have been, you know, doing the periodic leaks or patching that's necessary, but again, we're asking a lot of that roof to hang on. Aging equipment, again, reference to mechanical electric equipment that's original to the building, some of it's actually in concrete, so to access it to do a repair or see what's going on would be additionally challenging. Mechanical equipment is unreliable, there's no backup generator for power failure, parts, like I said, are often unavailable, are not available. No backup generator also led to a conversation we had today about, which we talked about, is wanting this to be more of a community on building. If we had that kind of thing, it's a shelter, should there be, you know, a big natural occurrence or something where you need to do that, you can do that at the high school, it'd be great to have another building where you could do that. That would allow for some more safety features. Here's some of the aging equipment, just if you want to get your walk-in freezer at Sandborne, you have to go outside. The cafeteria walk-in cooler in the middle, and we've got a clock system that doesn't operate anymore. Another issue in the BBLs is overcrowding, I mean, out of the gates overcrowding, but we've also added three modular units at Sandborne. Students often have, well, you have to exit the building to enter the modular units, which is concerns of safety and kids who actually access those buildings, I think, they have a swipe card to get in and out, which we had to issue. There are bathrooms out there, so it's challenging. Sandborne has also converted a custodial closet to some learning space. At PBD, the cafeteria is sort of right where the lockers are, it's, they make do, but it's very congested, there's a lot going in and out of there. PBD's stairwell between classes is very congested, again, intended for an elementary school, but lots of, you know, overcrowding doesn't help these aspects. Just some building pictures, the modular classrooms outside, classroom that was a custodial closet, reconfigured. And then this, to your point, court and ongoing is sort of looking at the educational shortcomings. Just the way, the way the teachers want to teach and can teach and have grown in education has changed dramatically in 50 years, which is really exciting, and they do a great job with their trying, but, you know, there's a lot more interdisciplinary learning, there's a lot more opportunity for meeting and ideally having breakout spaces to do their work, project-based... Project-based learning, like STEAM and STEM and Makerspaces. We just raised a lot of money at the middle school for Makerspace. And that's $8,000, has to be split two ways.
Have you seen those Makerspaces?
I haven't seen them yet.
Oh, it's us doing our best with the very limited, not adequate space. The librarians just gave up their offices so that they could turn that into this teeny Makerspace room, which we're thrilled for what we have, but it's not what you'd want it to be.
It's making a Makerspace out of a non-Makerspace.
Well, and I was, you know, as having a middle school, part of this, all the fundraising is very exciting and had a wonderful hypnotist come, it was a really good community building event. And, you know, it's compromised by, one, gap gap, two, for the money you raise. You have to make sure they're equal and they're making do with, you know, the space, so. They're doing, they're doing a great job, you know, likewise, we just had 3D printers last year or two years ago that were pruned, had gap gaps, so you can get them in both places. So a lot of redundancies like that, that would be nice to streamline. These are a couple of pictures of places that have been done, Lactis Duxbury, where Lori was part of that. It's a space for the teams, the grades to meet together. And the other is Citrit, I mean, you were there, Lori was there, you were just recently there.
Yeah, I could talk a little more about, a couple more points I can make. I can also talk about the educational visioning, I don't know if you want to talk about it now and do an update, or let's just keep going through this and then talk about it after. But one point, at least, that I made last night in presenting this, that I think is important, is that when we talk about a new space in the educational potential, we're not just talking about taking the curriculum that we have and putting it in a shiny new box. It is so much more than that, so much more involved. And the point that what, what the world is looking for in education right now is very different from what it was 50 years ago, or when we were all in school, even. It, the world is looking for project-based learning and understanding, initiative, interdisciplinary work, problem-solving, all of these kind of things. And that's our, our teams at the middle school are doing as much as they can to promote that. And as I pointed out last night, you know, I like to point out when I do this, I've got two kids in it right now. I think, given the space, the teachers are doing an amazing job with what they have, but there's so much that cannot be done based on the facilities. The team-based meeting area and, you know, can facilitate things that are interdisciplinary, truly. I pointed out, there was a space at Situit where it is all team-based. And so you could have an English class and a social studies class, literally have the same groups of kids swap positions for the next period, so that English and social studies can then become completely interdisciplinary for three months at a time and work together. Things like that cannot happen.
Because of the flexible wall.
Because of the flexible wall, and the fact that you could, right, exactly. And the fact that you could have those two classes together and between them, not only have the flexible wall, but big breakout spaces between all those sixth-grade classrooms to work in groups and everything. All of that stuff cannot happen in the setup where we are. So it really, I think it's important that we point out, this is not just a shiny new box. It can enable a completely different curriculum at another level, which is where we want to be.
And I'll say, all this visioning work that these guys are doing is ensure sort of the most, the smartest building and the smartest configuration, efficient and cost-effective, and really being really clear about how you want that space.
Yeah. Okay, process, timeline. I'll take this one. Okay, so what have we done so far on the statement of interest? I ended up repeating this multiple times last night. We submitted in 2017, 2018, and we're not accepted into the MSBA process. I think it's really important, even if we repeat it three times as we're talking, because we weren't accepted twice. And I, I would even say out loud, we feel that the likelihood of us being accepted just decreases over time. We don't feel that it's a high likelihood of being accepted. The invitations are limited by available funding. I mentioned, although it's not on here, that the cost of construction is rising faster than the available funds for this. So that also decreases your chance of being accepted every year. It's a very competitive process. Just this past year, 12 projects were accepted out of 70. And the acceptance rate, to Wally's point, we need to get, it'd be good to get numbers on what acceptance rates have been five years in a row.
Since the program changed.
Since the program changed, but it's decreasing in terms of your likelihood of being accepted. We were not invited in 17 or 18. The next admission deadline is 2019, which would only be for 2021, beginning construction.
Yeah, and also, Bob pointed out, there was one school that had been there 11 years, still hasn't been accepted. And then you found another couple that were.
Tinsboro, eight years, and Stonem High School, which got accepted this year, five years.
Wow. So the fact that we've applied twice does not, and that's a good thing to point out, too. The number of years you've applied does not get taken into consideration. So it doesn't mean we're further up the list just because we've applied multiple times. The fact that there's eight years and 11 years out there, I mean, that's, that's a little, well, frustrating. Discouraging, more likely. So the MSBA process, we have, this is actually the building process. We're using the slide that is the MSBA process, basically, because we will follow the same process. And so we're using it here to show what we'll go through, whether we work with them or not. The, it starts with eligibility period there in the middle. That's what we have not been invited into with the MSBA. So we, if we self-fund, we move straightforward from there, which is forming the project team. Here it's important to explain, the project team is first, creating the building committee, but that is a committee that's formed by the town. I think this is important to point out, because people, and actually, there were some questions last night about this, that who owns this, and was it the same for the high school? So I was able to clarify for the high school, because it was a region, the regional school committee created the building committee. But that would be different for this, because we are part of only Concord. The town of Concord creates the building committee. And then the building committee, as part of this project formation team, then hires an OPM, an owner's project manager. They are then our project manager throughout the entire course of the project. Next, once we have the OPM, is we put out bids for the actual feasibility study, gives us an idea of what's feasible, and then we go to schematic design. This is important to point out, that everything on this top row, so to speak, or middle row here, is what we're asking for funding for right now at town meeting. So what's termed as a feasibility study in our warrant article, warrant article, actually supports the hiring the OPM, doing the feasibility study, and completing schematic design. Schematic design is a detailed enough design that we could then bring back to town meeting, ideally the next year, to request funding for the full project. So that's important to point out here and clarify, and make sure everybody knows exactly what we're doing. Wally's made, Molly made the point just before this, that maybe we should call it feasibility and design study, so that that's more clear. I think that's something we should talk about, let's bump to after we get through this. Oh, wait, there's more, a little more on that.
But there's more.
But there's more. Once it's funded, we would go through the rest of the building project, which we won't get into the detail on. Obviously, we've mentioned we were not invited. Once, I think it's important to point out, once you're invited into an MSBA program, the estimated time to project completion is five to six years, because we estimate without them, we could do it in four to five years. It's, it's an average of about a year longer with the MSBA. So that's one of the advantages if we go on. And then on to project costs.
All right, so project costs, again, at the beginning, we stated that we're using the most current available data that we have. So the average cost in the 2019-2020 MSBA middle school projects, current, is $648 per square foot. $648. Feingold Alexander suggested roughly 125,000 square foot building, one building for us. So the total estimated cost at 2019, given those two, would be approximately $81 million. The cost to build a new middle school does increase every year. If you go to MSBA site, you can see actually their cost escalation, which is, since 2010, it's been 6.93% construction growth, construction cost growth, cost escalation. So it's important that we keep that in mind. There are aspects of the project, and people might bring this up, that are not increasing at that rate. So an overall percentage is sort of, you know, somewhere, we've got a later, you know, a range. But we do know, again, this is the data we have today. Similar projects that are currently being built are 90 million plus. And given our best timeline, if we did get approved in the spring, when we can go, it would likely cost 90-plus million. We have a slide in the addendum, and it might be something that we could talk about after, that has the current projects and what they cost, the similar demographic, you know, and population size of middle schools right now. And several are over 100 million, but they, you know, it's important that we kind of see that that's going on and figure out, you know, we're trying to figure out how, where we would be. If we wait, again, obviously, the cost would go up, but for what we know today, we're going to use a $90 million number to evaluate the project cost.
Quick question?
Yes, there are many questions.
What do we know about where MSBA gets their 2019-2020 number? Is that presumably from their December invitations?
That's a good point, there is a graph, so at the end, do you have a?
Yes, based on projects that are up for vote at town meeting, I think it's the 2020.
Ah, so these would have been 2018 invitations that are hitting 2020.
Or even before that, yeah, it just depends on.
2020, 10, okay.
Yeah, when the schematic was done.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, and to that point, the 81 million there, if, when you do that simple math, is if we were putting the shovel in the ground now, correct? So, so I think that's important to point out, the reason we're not talking 81, we're talking 90 million plus, we're not putting a shovel in the ground yet, we're still planning for that. But these, as Joanna said, these, these are the numbers that we have to work with. And that's something we've talked about, and I reiterated multiple times last night, throughout my talk of this at least, is we are working with the numbers that we have. None of these are exact, they're all estimates and calculations, but, you know, placeholders.
And it does get very complicated to sort of assess this cost, the cost of waiting. We do the best we can, again, with the current information, to get a sense of what we're looking at. This is something we're working on, this slide is not finished. We're trying to get at what, you know, the debt of a middle school versus the other schools that we are paying off. So I would like to say we've even approved on this already. But what's important to point out is, again, it assumes a $90 million building. It assumes some borrowing, a borrowing strategy that is, has been the way we've done it in the past. But there are, there are different ways of borrowing, and kind of depends when you borrow, what you decide. But we're making this assumption, which was, has been done in the past and comes.
Actually, this is the old one, this is not how we're doing it.
I know.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, well, what it has, the only thing that's missing is a peak.
No, because we changed, the way we do it, we went to level principal payment, which is how Concord does it, and it becomes seven.
Like I said, this is being worked on, this slide. Currently, this is, basically what it shows you is, here it's showing you 809 as an average median household tax impact, that would be the average over the course of the loan in one particular kind of loan. What we have changed it to is an average median household tax of approximately $700.
$64.
$64, because it's a different type of loan. I don't know if I get into the weeds of all this, but there is also a peak impact of $1,000, 2015. We gotta work on this to convey, I think, all these numbers to those people that want to calculate and what that means. So we continue to take input on that, how we would graph it, they couldn't read the graph of my most recent session. So again, you see how hard it is to do, because there's a lot of if this, then that. This all assumes no MSBA support, and we're doing it next year, based on the numbers we have today. And we're going to work on that. And then there comments or questions, Tim?
I've heard other members voice this more articulately than I can, but this is not a picture of choices with or without a middle school investment, because there would necessarily be a third line if that middle school was not present there. And that new line would be the cost of borrowing for any huge capital improvements necessary. So there's not, we're not choosing to add a red line to our lives here. That's one scenario.
Right. It's one scenario, that's why we just.
It would be replaced by another scenario that's not here.
And I think that's important, I think we do want to, this is the slide we want to work on the graph, add more to it, because I think as opposed, the orange line is what it would look like with the middle school. But to your point, it's not a question of just doing the middle school or not. Doing nothing is not an option. So what are the other options? One is wait 10 years and spend $34 million now, and another, you know, what, 150, 170 later? We could grab that out. Another is, you know, wait a year or two and maybe get MSBA support or not. And what do those lines look like if we're doing this, you know, two years from now instead of now? And so if we compare those, it would be a more accurate representation of what are our choices here.
Gets more complex.
Gets more complex.
But it tells us that it's not an either-or.
It's not a yes or no.
And because of all the factors, it's important, we got to figure out how much to convey and how much maybe to put this in the addendum. Because also, when you borrow, you don't necessarily borrow the whole nugget at once, you do some, and then you go back. So it did, we got to work on that. That's, that's, it's gonna.
Joanna, one thought of that, that we didn't mention just now. Typically, when you see something like this depiction, the, there'd be a third line, which would be the actual middle school borrowing against that scale on the left.
Yeah.
And then that orange line would be the compilation of those two, which you could, you can see. So that might be a little easier for people to understand. And, you know, you still show the gap between where we are, but you show actually the. Because in a way, that almost, you could read, somebody could look at that and think, there's going to be $12 million in debt service.
Yeah, right. And I think, yeah, it's really sort of, because we're doing if, 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 and hypothesizing along the way, we got to get at what really is probably the most salient, important facts generally, and take out the rest for if someone wants to drill down and go to one of those. But I think, I mean, candidly, I think the average bear is looking at it and saying, okay, what's across the main? That's kind of what I want to know.
So we begin there?
Yeah, so we're getting there. But yes, I mean, more input and we'll keep, we're going to have to work.
I can just give you the median household valuation is 881,550, so people watching.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was one of the questions of mine, so if you know your median house, if you know the median house cost, or then you can say, oh, slightly bump, slightly blow, somewhere, gives you a frame of reference.
Is that 2018 or 19?
2019.
19.
So that, there'll be aspects of this that we need to tweak to make it. It's got to be digestible and, you know, not too much for those who want to, you know, understand it, but not go too deep. Anyway, the cost of waiting.
Okay, cost of waiting. Here's where, talk about trying to get a lot of factors into a clear fixture. This is where it starts a little complicated, and we're hoping that we can paint a clear fixture here. The goal is to really understand what, obviously, what it will cost to wait us, for us to wait one year, if we waited another year to apply for MSBA again, and what that would look like if we got MSBA funding, and then there's if we didn't. So there are various pieces to it. There are the risk factors of the existing building, there are the ongoing expenses that we've talked about, and there are cost escalations. We're going to start here with the risks. I won't get into all the details of what's going on with each of these. But, and there's a whole list of things that could go wrong at the middle school. These are the major items that stand out. It's not necessarily everything, but it's the major items. So heating lines, we've already had, as you know, some pipes leaking and bursting this year. If that whole system goes and needs to be replaced, it would be a bit over a million, 1.17, to replace at both buildings. The roof, obviously, we've talked about, if we need to replace that, it's four and a half million. The septic systems are also original. If those need to replace, it's over $300,000. So you add those up, and you're a little over $6 million. That's not to say we necessarily will have to spend $6 million over the next few years on this building. We hope that we won't have to. But the longer we wait, the more chance that something goes and we have to put money into the buildings, even though they're going to need to be replaced. Okay, then you get to the big pieces. This is really the cost of waiting, even assuming we get in to MSBA next year, which we don't know if we will, but we're going to make some assumptions for a minute and just play within those assumptions. One is that we apply again to MSBA in 2019 and get accepted. That's not guaranteed, but we're playing with that scenario right now. In that scenario, there's a two-year delay to project construction. So because of that, all the numbers that I'm going to look at assume two years of cost escalation and two years of extra expenses. So we're, even though we're talking about waiting one year to start this feasibility process, we're talking about a two-year delay. we're talking about a two-year delay in building. Escalation costs, as Joanna referenced, we're looking at a range, reusing five to seven percent as, again, placeholders here. We know that it's not, you know, again...
This is wrong, we did three, we changed it.
You're right, this is an outdated, we went back to three to seven. Yes, we're using three to seven. So these numbers are not...
The one that we just...
Which one do we have?
Yeah, because this got posted.
This got posted, so that's what we're using. Okay. So we're going to, here's what we're going to do, I'm going to tell you what we're going to use, and what, at least I used last night, was the other one with this. So we did go back. So we're going to stick with a range of three to seven percent, which is pretty wide. It does create a large, a wide range of what the totals could be, but we feel like it's more fair. Although we think that escalation is likely to continue somewhere in the seven percent range, some OPMs even say it could be higher than that over the next couple of years. You never know, things could change, it could come down. Maybe we won't have that high escalation for a couple of years. So we're going to estimate it based on anything from three to seven percent. Three percent is pretty much typical inflation, so if it goes down, you're going to have at least that. And then we have to use that placeholder of a new building cost at ninety million. And I would reiterate again, and everywhere here that I'm talking about numbers, that this is a placeholder. We don't know for sure how much the building will be, but it's our best estimate.
So Heather, at three percent, that ten point three drops...
Right, becomes to six point three, right, exactly. So what we look at, the escalation cost, based on three to seven percent, is actually five to fifteen, I remember it, don't worry. It's actually five to fifteen, I told you I could do these on this slide, five to fifteen million. So that's an extra five to fifteen million over two years of escalation cost. Operational costs stay the same, it's a little over a million, because that was the five hundred forty-eight thousand per year that we spend in redundancy costs on the existing building. Capital maintenance costs, in our capital expenses for the year, for Concord Public Schools, we are setting aside fifty thousand per building, per middle school building, per year, that is just to do maintenance and repairs. So over two years, that's two hundred thousand. You get that, and when you bring it down to our new range, our range is between six and sixteen point three million that it could cost us over the next two years, basically, that we would be delayed if we wait for MSBA. I'm going to keep going without it, and then you can come back to it. It's okay, I know it. Thank you, though.
You still know it.
So then you have to go back to the slide before, which was the risks of things that could happen, right? We don't know for sure, and that's why that range is zero to six million. It's not likely to be zero, but hopefully it won't be six either. Somewhere in there.
It's fixed.
Woohoo, look at that, poof! Now we have more realistic estimates. But when you add that zero to six, onto your six to sixteen, we have a range of anywhere between six and twenty-two million that it could cost us to wait. Could cost us to wait, again, these are our estimates. Okay, then we move on to comparing that to MSBA reimbursement. So one of the biggest questions and pushback that we will get here, and reasonably so, is why don't we just wait that year and see if we get the reimbursement? That's a lot of reimbursement, right? So let's look at what it looks like. The reimbursement rate for MSBA is based on a town's wealth factor. For CCHS, the official or the baseline reimbursement rate was thirty-four and a half percent. Then there are exclusions, though. For instance, at the high school, there is the extra gym we wanted, there are other things. There are things that MSBA will not reimburse for, those are called exclusions, or scope exclusions. Scope exclusions in general with the MSBA have continued to grow over time. That's due to a variety of factors, one of them being that they have a cap on their square footage rate that they will reimburse for, and that cap is not growing as fast as the cost of construction. So there are more exclusions every year. In addition, middle schools are likely to have more exclusions than a high school. Again, various reasons, but some of them being that the MSBA doesn't support an auditorium in a middle school, they don't support a regulation-sized gymnasium, different things like that. So you put all that together, and we're estimating that our effective reimbursement rate for a middle school would be somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent. Again, we're working with ranges, it makes all of this even more of a range, but it's what we need to work with. So you come back to our ninety-million-dollar placeholder, and you say on a ninety-million-dollar building, our estimated reimbursement would be somewhere between eighteen and twenty-two and a half million. As you can see, and if you jumped back to the last slide and remembered, that we could be costing between six and twenty-two million. Our reimbursement could be significantly consumed by waiting even a year. And I think that is one of the critical things that we have to get across. And then, the bigger point on top of that is, we don't even know that we would get that reimbursement, in fact, it's a small percentage. You know, the likelihood from this past year was, what, seventeen out of eighty, what was it? What's my percentage there?
Twelve out of seventy.
Twelve out of, sorry, twelve out of seventy, seventeen percent, right? Seventeen percent likelihood of getting that, which, again, we think is decreasing, but even if you work with what you have, it's seventeen percent. It's a low likelihood. If we go and wait a year or two and don't get MSBA, we're back to doing this on our own, and we're doing it at a cost that's a lot higher than it is starting right now. So I think those are the two really important points that we need to get across. We're not guaranteeing that we're going to save money by doing this, but there is a significant chance that it could cost Concord more money in the end if we wait.
So just on all that, are there questions or comments?
Does that all make sense to everybody?
There's a piece of this that, waiting, which means effectively we would fail a town meeting on this article, doesn't mean we will get it approved next year if we don't get it in the queue. There is a point in time when the school committee has to make a decision about proposing significant renovation changes to those two buildings to continue to utilize them, if we are open-ended on when we might be able to start doing something with these. You know, if we went into a mode of, we are going to do what we have to do to continue to occupy the buildings, similar to what we did with the high school right now, we would still spend, you know, that's what those numbers are.
Right.
Doesn't have any, none of the numbers about doing some of the improvements that really should be done, if we're going to be in that building longer than the next couple of years.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't know if we, if we talk about that...
No, that's a good point, we should point that out, too.
Well, we've also made a decision in our capital expenses this year to put considerable money into them so that they will need little, hopefully, for the next four or five years, i.e., we get them to a really good total place so we can start to build a new middle school and not spend any more money on those schools.
Yeah, ideally, that money that we've been spending over the years would go into some sort of stabilization.
Right.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, that should be highlighted also. If we're not doing this in the next couple of years, we're talking about other investments into the schools, into the buildings.
So finally, sort of benefits of self-funding, we've touched on some of this, but we're able to design a school around visioning and the aspects of education that we want to provide for our kids and our families in Comfort. It does limit auditoriums, you get a cafeteria through the MSBA, which means where you eat, you can also perform your play or your orchestra. We have a wonderful, robust theater arts and music program, and it would be a shame not to have an auditorium, I believe, I think we all believe. Gyms are undersized, or not regulation, in the MSBA calculations. I know that there, we have heard from many youth organizations, in-town organizations would like more gym space, like to be able to use regulation gym, we have one at the high school, but the other schools don't have them, they're all undersized. So, you know, there are aspects of this that give us flexibility in what we want to provide in our education. We have to be careful not to say we're providing luxury and, you know, gold-plated options, but things that we think are really fundamental to good education for our kids, which is the work that's ongoing. The school design could also have a lot of, or have potential for sustainability features, you know, solar storage, grid services, like I mentioned, the town shelter should there be a need, obviously recreation space, it would really be a nice opportunity to offer more to just, not than just the middle school population, but to the community. And again, I think you accelerate your timeline in construction, because you are not wedded to a number of, you know, guidelines that keep, you know, keep the process from going as fast as it can. The potential savings, we've talked on, six to twenty-two million, again, there are all kinds of ifs and whens in that number, but they're real, that they will over time continue. And, you know, hopefully, the operation of two middle schools won't be a lot longer in these buildings, because over time, they just cost more. So we can emphasize sort of escal, not only do you speed up the process, accelerate the process, but in doing so, there's cost savings in that, you know, the efficiencies of doing it faster and in this climate of construction, which could also be savings to the project. It's important to tell people what to do next. We know town meeting, eventually will probably be scheduled, it's the kind of thing that would be scheduled as a, you know, figured time on a particular day, so hopefully we'll get that, and then we can say it's going to be a certain time, a certain day, so people know. There will be a ballot vote, it's looking like we will be waiting to see if we get approval, and then we will have to get the vote of the select board to have a vote, the polls, which has to be thirty-five days from...
Minimum of thirty-five.
Minimum days, thirty-five days from that vote, so that puts it into May. Got any questions?
This is my favorite slide, Joanna did it.
If you go back one slide...
Yeah.
It says something about CHP energy, what does that stand for?
Uh, wait, 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 I know. Hold on a second. I know it, I know it. It's basically more self-sufficient, and self-sufficient energy process.
It's where you harness the heat from electricity...
Whatever you have.
Send back.
I know, I know, I have it, hold on a second.
No, that's all right.
I'll come up with it, I have it here somewhere.
I'll send that...
You caught me, I'm going to...
Yeah, I love it, I love it.
I knew it too, I knew it.
There is a, there's a, there's a strategic plan with the light plant, certainly to do more of the, you know, the storage of...
Of otherwise waste you can...
Combined heat and power. Combined heat, yes, that's it, combined heat and power.
Okay.
It was all working together.
What's the solar storage idea?
Having solar panels, storing the energy there, solar energy.
We're not talking about some battery array.
I don't think so. These were just suggestions that have been thrown at us, so I wasn't, I wasn't going to get into, in fact, when I presented this last night, the details of what these are, they're just a bunch of ideas that have been tossed out to us.
I mean, ideally, we're in a lead certified building, and we have opportunities for, I mean, with certainly the light plant and their, the level of work they're doing to, you know, we do it with electric bus currently, and then trying to store some of the energy and, I don't know, I don't know exactly what the whole, how they roll out the, you know, the additional power, but it's when it's at a higher need than when it's at a lower need, they have it stored, but I should probably better burst in it before I'm trying to...
There are several ways to do that, but it just, we ought to either say solar panels or solar storage and have an answer.
Solar panels, okay.
Storage, because the storage is complex.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So one thing, one thing I thought of that would resonate with a certain number of residents is the ramifications to our carbon footprint of the two schools versus the new school.
Yeah.
Is there any way we could get some numbers on that?
I think we could use the, I mean, we, the experience of the high school would be valuable. The only difference is, we have newer boilers at these two schools than we had at the high school, so we'd have to give some sort of haircut for that, just to be...
I mean, do you think that'd be worthwhile, then, to have it?
I think that's a good idea, yeah. Because we're certainly using a lot of energy that's not the most efficient, other than the new boilers, yeah, other power that's not the most efficient at two buildings.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, you know, we are making, I think we're making a very strong argument and a very viable representation of what we recognize as the economics facing the schools relative to these two buildings. I don't know that we need to get into much more detail.
I know.
Because it's, I mean, you know, this is, we are doing a feasibility study and design and study. We will, assuming we approve that at town meeting, we will go through a whole other set of information process that's going to be about funding the school, you know, come for next year. So a lot of this stuff can get done in there. I think just having access to those things in our minds to answer some of the questions is valuable.
That's what I'm thinking of, because I know it's going to get much, much more complicated on the road.
Right, just having the concepts and ideas out there right now.
To convey the ideas, this is in the back of our minds, we're definitely thinking about it.
And this doesn't even include the visioning and work that we're doing right now, that we hope to add to the end.
Let's show them.
Which is why we're doing it, Matt.
Show these guys the end slides, because they're there for reference for answering questions. So we will, this will be the end of the presentation, but you will have in the addendum some supporting stuff from Fine Gold Alexander, I don't want to go through the...
I don't know that we need to, because we're all pretty familiar with it. But I do think it would be valuable to have right at the end of this, the slides that show the schematics. One of the things that was brought up last night was the idea that, you know, that we exhausted the other opportunities. And in fact, we did explore those with the Fine Gold Alexander report, we can show the schematics of their various representations. And then behind that would be those three slides, the two for each building and the combined, on the expenses, just so we have them quickly as a reference, without going through fifty-one slides.
That's in the addendum.
Because they're at the end of the, right now, they're at the end of that.
Well, I think also, I thought what we should do is have, go to our website and pull reports there, and you can say that or scroll down, whatever, but I think, again, some people are going to want to go deep here, and some are going to want to go here, and already in each one, we've gone into directions, and I'm wary of accommodating each one of them.
Right.
Because already, some of this, I just think is a little, a little in the weeds, and I think we can improve upon, you know, the cost, and even the cost of waiting seems like it might be, I mean, the benefits of self-hunting might be a little detailed, it's just you can accelerate it, you can address the needs, you know, more freely, and you can consider being LEED-certified and other, you know, sustainable aspects of school, like we did at the high school. Some things like that, just simplify that, that's great to hear, someone's going to be really interested in that, someone's going to be, you know, Brian Folds was in our group, he was all over that sustainability stuff and had all kinds of ideas, because that's what he, that's the work he does, but you know...
I mean, there are so many things that, do when we, I mean, we're, the facilities planning group is spending nine hours together going through the visioning exercise. So it's, you know, there's so much that we could do in a newly designed building with those things in mind, that we're just never going to be able to, we can't change these buildings we have to accommodate that with the footprint we have now.
Right.
Absolutely.
Impossible. But to try to explain that in this discussion is next to impossible, we'd have people there for so many nights.
Eyes blazing out. They, I mean, it depends on the level, and I think that's what the supporting slides are there for, and hopefully some of what we articulate just verbally to people, because of who happens to be in the group, and ideally, you know, that can satisfy or point them to where they can get it, right?
So process-wise, I feel like we all, we have some feedback from last night's session, from this morning's session, the first two times we ran through this. I think, Joanna, does this make sense still for us all to, just as a group, to go through the feedback and kind of talk a little about what, if any, major, not major, but what if any, changes we want to make to this, based on feedback so far?
Yeah, you know, I can do, we can do...
We can do it separately again, but...
If everyone's clear with what they said, I wouldn't spend a lot more time on anything together, I would just go forward, you could maybe highlight that will do the communication of all this, we obviously have our schedule, but you've put together a list of assigned, you know, how would this proceed?
Yeah, I can do that.
I have sent you an updated schedule that deleted the March third, fifth session, if you and I were to do, because we're going to have a school committee meeting that night.
Right.
So that you have the official schedule now, and I, we will, we'll get another round of the... of the slides to you before anybody's next session, and I would say, you have a communication plan that.
Yeah.
People assigned and.
I can talk about that. I have sent out, and I've put into a Google Doc just kind of a moving project plan of all the things going on. I've sent you guys a link so that you can see it, but I'll give you a quick overview of the communication strategy. We're trying to get the word out for these as broadly as possible, obviously. The easiest audience is through the schools, because we have access to them directly. The hardest part is getting the word out to those without kids in the schools, and that's a really important audience that we need to reach. So a few different things that we're doing. One, there's an organization now, it started as Event Juggler recently, and now is called Living Concord, but it has, it's a calendar with a weekly email of events happening in town, so we are on that. All of our information sessions, tours and forums are on that. These are also being announced in the League of Women Voters newsletter, thanks to, it's not here, but thanks to the league. I put an announcement on the Concord Yahoo group, and I think continue to do more and do reminders on there.
Yep.
I've worked with the, those who run each of the different, at least CPS, PTG newsletters, so that I've given them, I gave them individual kind of unique announcements for the first couple of these, and for this week, and then as of next week going forward, they have a template announcement that will go in every week until town meeting, but with the dates updated for, you know, this week's events, upcoming events, that kind of thing. So they'll have it everywhere. Obviously, things can go out by Connect Ed here and there as reminders, we're not going to send it for every, every event. There's our RSE subscriber list, and then it's going through the town, so Erin Stevens, who runs Communication for the Town, has been really helpful. These events are all on the town calendar now, and she's also going to be doing a few news field, news feed emails, again, not one for every event, but maybe a this week events for about the middle school type thing that is still getting out there. She's also going to post on the town social media outlets, which makes a lot of sense, is we don't do our own social media, but she said she can post on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram for us about these events.
I saw her Twitter tweet.
Oh, good, I'm glad.
It's on.
I need to follow that. And she's going to help us with some filming stuff with Minuteman Media Network, thank you. We're going to film one of our information sessions, or even two maybe, if we end up cutting from one to the other, but we're going to film an information session and post that online, so that anybody who can't make it to one of our sessions or forums can watch one online. We're also going to film what, one of the tours of both buildings and do kind of a highlights reel, so we won't, we're not going to put a video up of the entire tour of the building for three hours, but maybe it's a five-minute highlight reel showing different things in both buildings. And then, of course, as I emailed each of you the messaging for, I think it's really important that we all do individual outreach. I sent an email to a lot of people, actually, it was four different emails, because they wouldn't off it into one email, but I sent that information to pretty much my whole contact list in Concord, saying, hey, this is what's happening, come out and learn about it, we want people to be engaged. I think if we can all do that and encourage people to then forward it on and spread the word also, that would be really helpful. That, oh, and then the journal and the, and, well, Patch will follow the journal, Tom Lucy's going to help us strategize there, but we want to get things into, you know, calendar and events, somehow get these publicized in the journal as well, which we're working on, the logistics and the how. And we've also talked about maybe a commentary, seeing if we can do an editorial for the journal about why we think, why we're recommending that we should move forward on this now. Let's see. I think that's it on communications, unless I've missed one. Anything else that I've missed and anyone would recommend?
So just remind me, for your tracking and monitoring, when we do reach out to a particular constituency.
Oh, that's the next thing.
Will that be back to you?
Yes, so then the next, in terms of stakeholder groups, that's the next thing I was going to touch base on. I think that'd be great, if you can keep me, or do you want both of us, or just me to keep updated? This is on stakeholder groups, so we all have the list of stakeholder groups. We should all be reaching out to them. I think it's a dual message, or depending on the group, it could be one or the other, but if it makes sense, you know, if they're not having a meeting soon and it makes sense, it could just be, we're reaching out to you as a group, whatever it is, we want you all to be aware, here are our, here's our schedule of events, please encourage your members of your group to come. That's one option. The other is, at your next meeting, would you like one of us to come and talk? So that can also happen. For instance, I'll be at the Concord Integrated Preschool as a, what is their PTG meeting early in March, I'm going to join that PTG meeting and do this with them. Laurie and I are going to meet with CPAC and.
I've been to three or five PTGs.
Okay.
Certainly, I take every opportunity.
Right, exactly, to talk about that. So we should do that, and yes, as you reach out to groups and you have, you know, dates that they can do it, and of, and also don't feel that you're the only one, you know, if they say, well, our meeting is, you know, March seventh at this time, and that's not a date you can do, well, bring it back to us, maybe one of the rest of us can do it. So just because it's your group to reach out to doesn't mean that you have to make it to their meeting no matter what, someone else might be able to, but let's at least be reaching out, make the contact. If there are certain dates that they would like us to come that aren't on our schedule, let me know and we'll figure out who can make it.
Great.
Okay, so that's, that's outreach. We're also, as you mentioned, going to the select board next week. Other outreach, I think that's pretty much it on outreach. Do you want me to do an update on the educational visioning work now?
Yeah, I mean, the next agenda item is sort of the catch-all for all other updates.
Oh, right, okay, I guess I'm kind of moving into that.
If you're good, Joanna, we.
Yeah.
Consider it under that.
Yeah. Okay.
That's great.
Ready to the next item then?
Why don't we hear about the educational visioning?
I'll start with the educational visioning.
The work that you've been doing.
Which is not in front of me, but that's, so we have now had two meetings with this group, as, as most of you may remember, it's the Facilities Planning Committee, which basically took on this initiative, this project of doing the educational visioning now for this. And just like, while I said about the design of the building, this does not mean that this is the only time to have input on what middle school education will eventually be. There will be a lot more of that as we get to actual design of a building. But for now, it's input on what we think it could be and what we envision for now to inform this part of the process, and so that we can really understand, not only what is it that we're aiming for, but why and why now, because that's the, that's the part of the process that we're in. It's been a great process so far, we've gotten a lot of feedback. It's the really fun stuff, it's great. So far, we had a parent forum to, to take input, I got to run that, and it was really fun, it was great, we had probably, I would say thirty or forty, yeah, maybe forty people there.
That's awesome.
A lot of people there, a good hour and a half at least of just constant ideas, and I would love to see that, and dreams and visions and, and really good stuff. Then we've had input, let's see, the input is coming, we're also using some of the surveys and input that we got from our district planning last spring in this, the stuff that's middle school related. So for instance, we have feedback from the middle school students on what they would like to see in education, which is obviously middle school related. So that's great stuff to go through. We also just put out, you might have seen last night, Laurie just sent out a survey.
Hundred responses already.
To all, you, how many?
Hundred.
Already?
Hundred and two.
Oh, my gosh, that's awesome. The email we got last night?
Yeah.
Wow.
This community is just awesome.
Incredible.
They love opportunities to weigh in.
That's great. Twelve hours later, we have a hundred responses, amazing.
That is.
So we're going to have a lot of input on educational vision. There's also a, it was going, there was going to be a forum with all the middle school teachers, that was supposed to be Tuesday, when we had to have an early dismissal, so that's going to be a survey now, but we'll have more teacher input. And working with our consultant has been great so far, we've had two of our sessions, she's helping us to take what we have so far, and we will incorporate the next round of input, obviously. But we've been narrowing down what we have into themes, which we will then add to, and it's, and by the end, we, I think we'll be able to bring it down to a, a great vision. So it's, like Larry said, it's a really fun process.
Do you want to mention our trip to Situate?
Oh, my gosh, and we went to Situate to see the Gates Middle School, which was a product, project just opened last year, they're in their second year of operation, it's a six to eight middle school, it was really inspirational to be there.
Or depressing.
One of the teachers said to me, I don't know if I can go back. Yeah, yeah.
I know. That's a double-edged sword.
It is, it is, but amazing, both from a just feel and inspiration standpoint, I mean, you walk in, it's natural light, it's bright, it's inspiring, it's airy, there's a great feel to it, but then, like I was talking about up there, the, the way it's set up, the, the setup is to really encourage all of this collaborative learning and projects-based stuff, they have big group team areas that are grade-based, with big common areas in the middle, that are not just empty spaces, it's, it's large spaces that can be broken up into small, with lots of projectors where students practice giving presentations, all these small breakout areas where they work in groups, the teachers have their own, basically their own space, instead of having their home in their classroom, they have a grade-level kind of department, so to speak, space, where they have their desks and they have space for collaboration there. I mean, just all kinds of things that were really, just wonderful. In terms of rethinking curriculum, there was so much they could do there. Oh, the wall that unfolds, this accordion wall, that was so easy, first of all, you could just take a piece of the wall and move it over, it's all whiteboard, so they're using it, and then when you accordion it or fold the pieces, you can still use the whiteboard spaces, but you can connect these two classrooms. So the teacher we were talking to was literally talking about the fact that, oh, yeah, it's next week, we're going to have the next, I think it was six weeks straight, with the social studies class and the ELA classroom completely together. And it's, it's those two classes that have those, the same groups of kids that basically go to social studies and English and then swap, so for those two blocks, they now have a double block of interdisciplinary project work. And it's, you know, it's all combined, it's, the, the whole thing is so exciting, you know, satellites and light coming in everywhere, go ahead.
Just having talked with those administrators while that school was even prior to approval, they, they developed the educational vision piece, so they could do two years of professional development in project-based learning, and then build a school that allowed that to really flourish and maximize that. So I, that's the idea where the visioning work will go. It's great to be doing it now, because we have got time to slow down and figure out what our vision is. The teachers in the room are getting really inspired and energized, so I know that the more we can include the teachers in a bigger picture conversation, that's going to just keep happening, so that's all the fun.
It is.
That's just really great work, yeah.
It's exciting.
Lot of fun.
It gets you really excited about what we can do here, if we can make all the.
It's actually honestly, like, well, okay, what can we do within these walls? Justin and I have had that side of the conversation, okay, we can do some pieces of this or get some seeds going, so, not that we don't have some, but just to.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, the reconfiguring will allow for some.
Allow for some, I mean, once you see the new spaces and.
Yeah.
Having opened a new middle school and been back to one now in the last week, you really do realize the limitations of our two schools. It doesn't matter how much we say we're going to try to do, you're going to do it under some really significant constraints, it's just no way around that. So the reconfiguration will certainly help, and then we'll have grade level, well, grade levels together, but horizontal conversations with each other, which right now, we can't even figure out how to get the two seventh-grade social studies teachers in the same place at the same time, so that alone is a huge step forward.
Right.
But you are going to run up against the limitations.
Yeah.
Sooner than later.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, at one point, it was funny, one of the teachers says, because Peabody's got that big open space feel, which is the gist of where you go.
Right, right.
Things like, oh, Peabody has a lot of this kind of feel, but for all the wrong reasons.
Yeah. In all the wrong places and ways, you can't use it.
In all the wrong ways.
Right, exactly. Yeah, so that's, I would say that's the visioning piece.
Yeah, well, that's great, that's important.
Yeah.
We'll have a nice, the goal here is to have an output that comes to inform this group and anyone else, so we're going to strive for that when we meet again after the break.
Yeah. That's great. Then we can talk about tours.
I'll just.
You want to do that next?
Sure.
Okay. So I sent this to, I resent to everybody the tour notes from the tour that we took, it was just my notes, that we can use to give tours, they start this weekend, Bob and I are on for Saturday, so we'll be at Sandbourne at nine-thirty, and Peabody at eleven o'clock. At this point, I'm pretty much thinking we're just going to go through the way we went through when we were given the tour, we'll have our tour notes next to us, but is there anything that I, I don't know if everybody's looked at them, I have, if, for anybody out there, we're talking about tour notes, since we're talking about it, we should provide copies, anybody want a copy of our notes that were, thank you, for people, and I think that's enough. Oh, whoops, I made, oh, no, no, Tom had, yeah, one short, here, one more. So, do you guys have it? I said that's to you today.
Yeah.
I mean, we have our themes around the educational experience, the physical vulnerability, just that it never looks clean, inefficient use of space, pipe work, roofs, disparity of experience, and then going through, you know, we pretty much started with the kitchens at Sandbourne, went to the gym, then the mods, through the music art wing, so to speak, the auditorium, stopping at a couple bathrooms along the way, the family and consumer science room, the library and the academic wing, and there are notes under all those. At Peabody, there's some stats here on, on numbers of kids, but some general concepts, and we pretty much went, maybe I didn't, you know, I didn't even include cafeteria slash locker area here, which we did, but you can start there, and then we went upstairs and did library, classroom spaces, back downstairs to the gym, oh, that's where we went, food service cafeteria, you've got the forum, again, some bathrooms, we didn't actually, oh, there is, went over the, there's the tech arts, the technology and art hallway, I don't know if we went there. And then there's the small nurses' room, which is considered inadequate, and some other summary notes. So anything on there that, is everybody comfortable doing this tour, or are there any questions?
One thing I've thought about, having done one of the tours and certainly studied this stuff, is it, it's useful to ask people how they heard about the tour, where the information came from.
Yes.
What their connection is, or, you know, what they represent, and people are very happy to share that. I just want to tease out one other idea, which is the question, do you already have opinions formed about these middle schools, or this middle school singular, as we call it in this town? Would that be useful? Because I know I certainly had strongly felt opinions many years ago, when I first encountered it with my kids. Not to suggest those opinions are good, bad, true or false, but rather, they're there, and now we're going to put it against today's tour and come up with some sort of new, new reality, new appraisal of what's going on here.
Yeah.
But I think so many people in this town do have strongly felt opinions that have been built up over years.
Yeah.
We've talked to people who have said, well, I had an opinion when I was a student here, and I have another opinion now that my kids are here, and now we're layering this third one on, which is, let's look at it as objectively as we can now with this other idea, which is, we're going to replace when and how do we do it.
Right.
Because I think that is our overarching question. It's not if it's a when and how.
Right.
That we're at right now.
Yeah. No, that's a good point, and do we, yeah, if it's, if it's a small enough group, you can even tee something up at the beginning, you know, and, and ask where, if people have, you know, opinions already they want to share, or questions that they want, that you want to make sure that are addressed throughout the tour or info session, is probably a good idea.
So to that point, I, I love the notes that you sent on the last session, I mean, So to that point, I, I love the notes that you sent on the last session, I mean, last night's session, and Bob took some notes today. As best we can, taking notes on each of our experiences, just highlights, you know, they're not, don't have to do a whole lot, but do you wanna be the receptacle of that, or me? I don't care either way.
Sure, either way.
Does anyone, should put it all somewhere, when you get done, you know, send something, you can send it-
Yeah, send them all to me if you want.
All right, so we'll send them to Heather, and just keep it together, so we have, sort of see what the themes emerge, and, you know, things we wanna be sure, or, and likewise, you don't have an answer to something, or you need to go back and, you know, you need to check, I think it's fine to say, I'll get back to you.
Yep.
And then we can find out the answer, is there a lot of different ways of approaching it, or that people will approach it?
Definitely.
Okay.
We must talk about the ballot vote before we leave.
Yes. That's the big question of the day.
So the ballot vote is, basically, here's the deal, which I think most of you know, there's a town election that happens before town meeting. When you ask for a debt exclusion in town, the common practice is, you get two opportunities to approve it, both at one at town meeting and one at the polls. For the high school, at least in my memory, the high school, and the two rounds of landfill remediation with town meeting, and then we went to the polls after. In this case, because the election is before, if we wanna go to the polls after, instead of before, we have to request that of the Select Board, and they make, they'll take our recommendation, I think if we stay and be, please put us on the ballot before, or, you know, we would like to have the opportunity to be on the ballot, should we get approved at town meeting, is really the question. And the practice in town has been to do it after, so that people can have the conversation at town meeting, likewise, we'll have a capital project at the high school. And I'd say, I would suggest that if everyone's okay with that, moving with the usual course of events, we would request of the Select Board to have a ballot vote after town meeting, should it be approved.
I think that's maybe a very way to go.
I think it is. I'll just voice that my concern in that plan is that delays us in our follow-up and our next steps, assuming that it passes. And to just lay out, and maybe it's just a matter of, we need to be really thinking ahead about teeing up everything in advance, so that it's, assuming it passes the town meeting and at the ballot vote, we are ready to be running full speed the next day. Because ideally, our timeline is to finish the feasibility and schematic design in time to bring it back to the next town meeting.
Yep.
And that's a tight timeline already, so putting it off an extra thirty-five days, or more, thirty-five days after the Select Board meeting, is gonna cut into that. So it concerns me a little, but that doesn't mean that we can't do it, I think it means we need to be really prepared to hit the ground running.
What's the proposed date to do it, if we do it afterward?
Well, the mechanism for how it happens is if it's approved, the town, the Select Board have to meet and vote to approve a ballot.
A special election.
A special election. And then from that, it's a minimum of thirty-five days?
So the town manager suggested that the Select Board could reconvene the day after town meeting, so this has got some ifs to it, but that's what, that's what he suggested, and that they could then set it to be thirty-five days, which would go the shortest possible timeline.
To the mid-May.
To the middle of May.
Right.
The other part of the discussion is if you wanted, if you wanted it in a general election, you'd have to decide today, because they would have to vote on that on Tuesday night, bringing this to thirty-five days.
Right.
Well, there'd be a little bit of cost savings, maybe inconsequential compared to the magnitude of the project, a little, little cost savings, but regrettably, everybody knows, we couldn't move until December, so it feels like they're, they, the citizenry are catching up right now.
Right.
Because we couldn't move until right now, so regrettable but necessary to put it after town meeting, because town meeting serves that purpose of informing folks and allowing for the engagement around this at a deeper level.
Exactly.
Would it be otherwise, but it's not.
Well, we also added wrinkle of, we have one at the region as well, Capitol article, that, our, our Capitol article there needs both town meeting vote and at the polls, and we don't have the region convening time.
Yeah, the discussion.
To have a discussion to get it on before. But I think, I mean, our, our practice has been to do it after, and I think we, we might cause some concern with people, it looked like we were trying to get it in there.
Freshen feels like a bad thing.
Yeah.
I think the community likes to have the opportunity to discuss these things at town meeting before they're forced to vote on something.
Okay, so you'll follow up?
I'll pass that on to the town manager. I expect when we're there, Tuesday night, it will be for further discussion.
Yes. Can I, before you move on, can I make a point, following up to what you just said, Cora? I actually meant to mention this while we were standing up there presenting, but the point you just made about it being, feeling like a tight timeframe, since we couldn't start in December, I actually started the conversation last night with that, as I welcomed everybody, I basically teed it up, saying, you know, we've been in this discussion for two years, but I know it can feel sudden and quick to the community right now, and this is why, it's because we only had, you know, we only found out in December about MSBA not including us, and we only have until April to move, and that's why this is the timeframe, and so we're doing, you know, a lot of outreach to try to encourage a comprehensive conversation. So just a note on presenting, because I think it was, it seemed to be a good way to open it up, and, and people kind of got, okay, I, I get why this is happening the way it is, and why we're here, and that you want our input, so, just another note on presenting.
Laurie, we don't need a vote on the ballot question?
I don't think so.
Do we what, sorry?
Need a vote on the ballot question?
We need to advise the Select Board what you were saying.
What are preferences?
Yeah, okay.
Because they actually decide.
Yeah, no, they decide.
But they, they're looking for our recommendation.
It appears that our consensus is-
Yeah, it is good enough.
Pretty clear.
Unambiguous.
Yeah, pretty clear.
All right, so in, in the interest of time, because some people have to go, I think it too?
Actually, I do, I have two.
All right, so I, I would, I would recommend we do the budget transfers, and perhaps take a motion to delay the goals update for another time, another meeting?
Sure.
Technically have to vote.
I, what's that?
I think you technically have to have a vote to-
Yeah, I would move that we delay our goals discussion until our next CPS meeting.
Second.
Any questions or conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jared?
So I have nine thousand seventeen dollars and ninety-seven cents in transfers, just some housekeeping. Most of these are internal transfers, so they ask me if they're internal. So if I don't have any questions on that, the variance report. So we'll continue to be in good shape, have an available balance of 1.62 million. We, right now, you can see that the nine thousands programs with other districts has significantly gone down, because we did some reclassifications to Circuit Breaker, we still have money available in the Circuit Breaker revolving, so that seventy, right now, we're in good shape to, to pass that over to the revolving account. So again, it covered everything that we, we know of, and we're in pretty good shape.
That's great.
That's great. Very clean and clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
All right. Thank you, Jared. Any questions for Jared? Old business, I'll just give a quick Alcott principal search update, we had our first meeting, drafted questions that were tied to the standards. We are on the hook now to get through, I think it's about a dozen resumes, the qualifying candidates for, might be like fifteen, that, that passed the first serve wave of minimum, which I think was like being a principal in the past, and it was pretty low, like most people who've had any experience pass through, and then we're reading those resumes, I've gotten through half of them, it's already very exciting, so we will read those and meet again on the 25th, I think is our next meeting.
You're interviewing at that point?
We're, oh, by then. No, no, the 25th is-
Oh, the optional meeting.
The optional meeting, which-
The snow made a little change in the plan.
So we missed our meeting because of the snow, but in essence, we gotta come up with the eight that we all agree should be interviewed, then we start the interview process, and who's gonna ask what questions, and that kind of thing, which will happen over the course of a couple days, I think.
Right after the break.
Right after the break. So, exciting, Chris is leading, leading a great process?
Big series to fill.
Yeah. But great people on the committees, and looking out for Alcott's great.
That's great.
All right, so do I have a motion that the Congress School Committee would vote to approve the improvements to the Alcott baseball and softball field?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
With thanks to CCYV.
Yeah, and Steve, I say Steve Source has a lot of work for the, the kids of softball and baseball, so thank you to him. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Laurie, I have a motion for the school committee, Congress School Committee, to accept the CPS enrichment fund donation in the amount of thirty-two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
I have a question, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, could we just identify ourselves first, from the audience?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
If you have a question, do you have to identify yourself for us?
Sure, I don't mind at all. My name's Cory Spalding, and so I did have a question about your enrichment fund donations. I think that we've traded some emails about your nonprofit fiscal sponsors.
Yep.
So is that the name of the nonprofit fiscal sponsor? Is it the enrichment fund? Is it the ConPac enrichment fund?
Uh, we'll have to look, open look, okay?
Okay.
Do you have, can you also state your address?
Sure. I have Thomas Halt in Framingham.
Oh, okay.
Now, here, for those of you who may not know, my child was, I was a board officer of a PTO organization in Framingham, that was involved in some suspicious activities involving corruption with the school committee. Framing him excluded my daughter from attending, we were forced to put her in Nated where her dad lived. Come to find out, apparently Nated wasn't doubling money, and they were also involved in some financial corruption. I just won an ACLU lawsuit because the town of Nated school administrators bullied, child abused, my child to the point where she was suicidal, hospitalized for thirty days, so please understand that you're a nonprofit organizations, the board officers have a duty.
Yeah, I think, I think we've actually exchanged emails, and I think you're, we're waiting on a public request for a record.
I need a public request, I'm come here today, and do you have any information currently on this enrichment fund?
Well, we, we can talk offline, I just, this, we need to finish with our business, because people have to go.
I appreciate that.
But we're, we're happy to do it after.
It's important to the public bracket.
Sure.
Because minutes are legal documents.
Yep.
And so I do appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we have one more, do we have the last?
Yes.
We conducted the vote, right? So could I have the motion from the Congress?
Oh, did we?
Did we vote?
No.
No, I don't think we did.
Sorry? For the previous motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then the final, the Congress School Committee votes new membership to the CMS facility planning?
I can explain that, just because we've had a little bit of turnover in the teacher staff on the facilities planning committee, who couldn't, some of them just couldn't keep up the time commitment, and one of the community residents moved away, and then we happened to have someone who was here really following the discussion and volunteered, so I would like to move that we seat teachers Sita Der Vassila and Megan Hogan-Stedman, and resident